Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. At this time, we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand? Place the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Before I do the roll call, just to remind everybody, if we're here longer than 11 o'clock, if you are parked in parking lot G, which is immediately to the right of this building, it is three hours parking. We normally will take a break between 10:00 and 10:30. You will have an opportunity at that point to move your vehicle or back it up six inches to get rid of the chalk mark. But that's what the Leos have told me this is what they check for. All right. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Calley.
Present.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
All right. All right, item number four is what's called public comments. This is a time when anything that's not agendized already later on, the public is allowed to comment. Please understand, under the Government Code section, known as the Brown Act, we can take information, we may ask additional information, questions, but we cannot decide or give you a decision. Do I have no speaker cards as far as that? Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Twenty-three years and I still don't have my theme music for that. From Jeopardy, were they the? Do you do? Yeah. What I'm stalling up here is to give my director a little more time to show up. All right. Let the record reflect that nobody spoke on this. Item number five, which is why I believe everybody is here today. This is PL 14-0057 Wildlife Environment Conservation Conditional CUP, and I believe we had Mr. Dabrowski today. Is that correct?
Yes, very good. Good morning, Chair Westner, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jay Dobrowolsky, county staff and case planner for the item before you. The item is a request by Wildlife and Environmental Conservation Incorporated for a conditional use permit to legalize an animal keeping facility that was constructed without the benefit of the required permit. The applicant and consultants are in attendance this morning. The animal keeping facility has both wild animals and inherently dangerous animals. The facility provides services such as rehabilitation, educational outreach, and conservation programs. The facility receives sick or injured wildlife. The animals are treated, then released into the wild or placed in other facilities. The facility offers educational outreach programs. Volunteers bring birds to schools or other community groups for education. The facility also offers onsite conservation education programs. The facility will have visits by small groups and by school groups and other youth groups. The facility will have a total of 12 volunteers that have animal handling experience, and there will always be at least one qualified trainer onsite at all times. The noncoastal zoning ordinance defines a wild animal as an animal which is normally found living in a natural state and not customarily domesticated. The ordinance defines an inherently dangerous animal as an animal that poses an inherent danger to its keepers, the public, property, or the environment. The wild animals onsite include a camel, raptors such as eagles, owls, and a zebra. The inherently dangerous animals onsite include a mountain lion and tigers. The facility is located north of the city of Moore Park along State Route 23. The facility is approximately three and a half miles from downtown Moore Park. The facility is surrounded by agricultural properties ranging in size from 10 to 80 acres. The project site is located on an 11-acre property that was formerly used for agricultural When viewed from Broadway Road, the facility is screened by existing windrow trees. The facility currently has various raptor and feline enclosures. Detailed plans are attached in the staff report. The requested CUP would authorize additional enclosures similar to the existing enclosures The enclosures are screened from off-site viewing locations by a privacy screen along the perimeter fence. The raptor enclosures are constructed with chain link fence and have a canvas roof. The raptor enclosures are 14 feet tall. The feline enclosures are constructed with chain link fence and have a metal roof. The feline enclosures are 15 feet tall. The feline exercise area is surrounded by a 14-foot-tall chain link fence that's topped with two feet of barbed wire. Staff is recommending a condition of approval to require a fully enclosed exercise area, unless various county agencies determine that a full enclosure is not required. The animal facility will be enclosed by a perimeter fence to keep out the public and The perimeter fence is an eight-foot-tall chain link fence topped with two feet of barbed wire. The inside of the perimeter fence will have a privacy screen and landscaping. Staff identified one environmental impact from the proposed project related to agricultural resources. The applicant has agreed to mitigation measures to reduce the impact to a less than significant level. Pursuant to CEQA, staff prepared a draft mitigated negative declaration and recommends that your condition adopt the M&amp;D. In order to grant the CUP, your commission must make certain findings. A discussion of these findings is detailed in the staff report. Staff recommends that your commission find that the proposed project is consistent with Regarding the compatibility of surrounding development, staff compared the proposed project site with the only other county facility that currently has tigers. That other facility is located in Lockwood Valley and is surrounded by large lots. The proposed facility is comparably surrounded by large lots. Regarding the public health, safety, and welfare, staff has developed conditions of approval with various other county agencies for increased safety. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, staff has notified surrounding property owners. Notice also included various state and federal agencies. To date, staff has not received any public comments regarding the proposed project. Therefore, based on the previous discussion, staff recommends that your commission take the recommended actions that are detailed in the staff report and approve the requested conditional use permit. At this time, I just want to point out, there were two memos that were sent to you with additional information that were not included in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time? Hearing none, thank you very much. Is there anything additional from staff before I proceed? Okay. All right. At this point in time, ladies and gentlemen, do the commissioners have any disclosures regarding this, whether they receive any additional information that currently available to the public? Commissioner Karen?
I did go on a site visit.
Okay. Did you receive any additional information that you should disclose?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Duquesne?
I also visited the site, and I just noted that there was a sign at the drive leading to the facility that said Eagle Canyon. There were, I noticed that the main gate on the perimeter had no barbed wire on top. I don't know how you could, but I noticed that. And when I was walking the grounds, there was loose electrical, like, extension cord going across. So I'd like to see what the applicant has to say about those things that I noted.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Sorry? No disclosures. I'm acquainted with, I believe, an attorney for the applicant, Mr. Bradbury.
Commissioner Anstott?
I have no disclosures. I have represented Mr. Bradbury in the past. If that is a condemning offense, let me know.
Might be a question of intelligence. All right. Chair has no disclosure, other than I've been a resident of Moore Park since 1982. I drive by at least twice a week. I have not physically visited the site. I also have to disclose that I sat as the chair of the Moore Park College Foundation for 20 years. So I'm familiar with the Eden Program, and some of the representatives are here, and indirectly with Mr. Schwabauer through his parents. But I do not feel that, I have not received any other information, just knowing those people. All right. With that, then, ladies and gentlemen, this is the way we'll go. The applicant will speak, and they are given an unlimited amount of time, since it's their application. Oh, I'm sorry. County Council?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I am just hoping that the two commissioners who made site visits can provide some more detail about, in general, about what they viewed at the site, that this, that's per, excuse me, per our county land use hearing rules. And the idea there is that you give everyone here the information in general terms that you viewed at the site, so they can ask you follow-up questions or comment on that.
I didn't know whether to comment on that at this time, but I can. In general, it seemed that the facility, what I observed was that the enclosure seemed to be very spacious and well-maintained. All of the animals appeared to be in very good health. So my general impression was that, was also that it was very quiet. I was there in the middle of the day, but it was very quiet. I felt it was very clean and very comfortable surroundings.
And so did you tour the whole facility? Maybe you could just describe what you saw at the facility in terms of enclosures and anything else?
We were given a general, I was given a general tour of the facility. Did not go into any of the structures, but given a full tour of the raptors and the owls and the rehabilitation cages and the animals that were there, and a description and explanation of what all the animals are and how they got there, which was very interesting. Some of them, a lot of them were injured and therefore could not be released back into the wild. And the tigers were very beautiful and very, the security, the enclosures, the entrances are completely enclosed and look very, very secure.
Commissioner Duquesne, I think maybe you weren't in the room.
I stepped out to get some paper towels.
Yeah, it's, the idea is when you take a site visit, you need to describe in general terms what you saw at the facility, in terms of, you know, enclosures and anything else.
What I observed was that the enclosures were right clean. There were no odors. We walked the perimeter of the area that's fenced, not the entire property. We drove in and parked our car within the gate. The road leading to it, you know, I kept on comparing to the Malibu Tiger Project, and the road is straight, it's level. Generally, I observed that there's, it's not a high fire danger. There are no facilities such as parks or trail systems that can view into this facility. It appeared in the distance that there were a handful of homes, maybe three, and it looked like maybe a hole of golf course that was some distance away might be able to see just rooftops of the enclosures. They looked fairly new. They didn't look like they had been there years and years. There was no rust. Dust was controlled. The animals, there was only one animal that was persuaded to hoot to us. It was a very soothing and mellow sound, not jarring at all, and I'd be very surprised if anyone outside of the area could hear it, because the area generally is, you can hear a lot of truck traffic. And that's all I can recall at this moment. If it's appropriate, I can, if other, I can elaborate.
No, that was fine. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Does County Council need any additional disclosures, or are you comfortable with what you have?
I'm comfortable. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right. As I said, the applicant will be given as much time as possible, since it is their request for a permit. At that point in time, Chair will open the public hearings. We will take those in favor. After that, those who oppose, this is a guideline set down by the Board of Supervisors for this commission. At that point in time, the applicant will again be given opportunity to rebut or final statements. Staff will then make any comments they feel appropriate at that point in time, and when we feel we've had enough information, Chair will close the public hearing, and we will deliberate for the decision. There will be a pop quiz on this later. All right. Okay. With that, I have the three appellate speaker cards, one, two, and three. Is that the order which you wish to be called? All right. The first one will be John Hecht, followed by Lisa Woodburn, followed by Patty Perry. Name and address for the records, ladies.
Thank you very much. Chair Westner, members of the commission, my name is John Hecht. I'm an engineer with Sessby Consulting. Address is 374 Poli Street, Ventura, California.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me today. If we could start the presentation, that would be phenomenal. And while they're doing that, our presentation today is 15 to 20 minutes. And the first slide is an outline of the presentation. You should have that on your dais in front of you. So while the graphics are catching up, we'll go straight to the outline. And I'm going to give a little introduction, then we're going to show a video that Patty prepared that talks about the mission and gives you some examples of the veterinary and the other care that you might not see walking through the facility. After that video, Lisa Woodburn from Jensen Design and Survey is going to talk about the project and the specifics of the project. She's going to talk about how it's compatible with the area, and she's going to talk a lot about safety and show examples. If we could go, there we go, to the, there we go, of the safety and how the different enclosures are secured. And then I'll finish up with a little bit of comment on, summary of the project and a minor comment on the conditions. In terms of introduction, WEC, as we call Wildlife and Environmental Conservation, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corp. That means that their mission, as they agree to and as regulated by the IRS, is education, and that is why they're there. It's education, it's rehabilitation, and it's conservation. As Mr. Dabrowski said, we're here requesting a permit to house a facility for these wild animals, and it's in unincorporated Moore Park. We've also been there since 2008, and we're just here now. So I just wanted to comment for a minute of how that happened. And when the facility was set up in 2008, permits were obtained from all of the wildlife agencies, and Ms. Perry went to Ventura County Animal Control and approached them, found out what they needed. That permit was ultimately issued a few years later, because they didn't have the procedures in place. She was not aware until 2012 that a CUP was needed. Since 2012, she's been working diligently. We've cleared up every issue that the county has, and this is our last stop. So thank you very much for your time, and we're very excited to be here today. As I said, the project team members are myself, Lisa Woodburn, and Patty Perry, who are right behind me. Ms. Perry will be here for questions after we're done. And now, if we could play the video, and then after the video is complete, Lisa Woodburn will come up, and she will explain the specifics of the project.
...Incorporated is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to wildlife rehabilitation and global conservation education. We take in and treat sick, injured, and orphaned wildlife. Our primary goal is to return these animals back to the wild. This great horned owl was found on the side of a road brought in by a member of the public after sustaining an impact by a car. She suffered a total of five fractures to her wings. Dr. Mulner performed the necessary surgery, and WEC treated her through an extensive rehabilitation process. Although she regained some flight, she was not suitable for release. She is now serving as an educational ambassador at a zoo in central California. This magnificent adult golden eagle came to us from the Kuyama area with compound fractures to his right wing. He was emaciated and dehydrated after having been wandering around on the ground for several days. Dr. Mulner was unable to pin the wing due to the age of the injury. However, after correcting the sight as much as medically possible and helping him to regain his strength through rehabilitation, he was transferred to the Birmingham Zoo to represent his wild counterparts through their education program. Meet Fiona, sent to us from Anchorage, Alaska. Some of our cases are particularly challenging, this being one of those. No, this is not a plucked chicken. This is a baby bald eagle that was found in Kodiak, Alaska, missing all of her flight and tail feathers, with the remainder of her body feathers falling out at a rapid rate. Sometimes we just have to diagnose and treat based on our speculation and gut feeling from experience. We formulated a treatment program for her and prayed a lot, and God was leading us on this one, because here she is 10 months later. Fiona will make her home here and remain in our eagle program at WEC. We get wildlife in from many different sources. It is very much a part of our mission to engage the people who care enough to bring them to us and to make these people a part of the process and eventual outcome. Our public agencies know they always have a place to go, and they're very much a part of our organization. In this case, our local fire department delivered an injured red-tailed hawk and participated in its eventual release. This little guy was orphaned at one day old. He was brought into a sanctuary in Tyler, Texas, along with two siblings that did not survive. He was immediately transferred to WEC for neonatal care, where we were able to provide him with the specialized expertise it takes to care for these types of intense cases. Along with the supportive and nutritional care and his own private nanny, we have given him all the love and enrichment it takes to make him a viable, successful, and most engaging ambassador for the North American cougar. Max is now three and a half years old. Although the carnivores at WEC never leave the facility, they are habituated and trained from babies to lead, load, and transport in the unlikely event of an emergency. They are desensitized to these measures and learn that it's a positive experience. They have been conditioned to have well-established and trusting relationships with the people that care for them. In addition, WEC is blessed to have an abundance of enthusiastic assistance from our local Ventura County Fire Department emergency team whenever needed. Education is the most significant part of our mission at Wildlife and Environmental Conservation, raising awareness to global conservation through education. Our organization reaches out to people along with the animals representing their individual species from all parts of the globe. Creating an emotional bond, having positive experiences with these rare and amazing creatures, brings tangibility to the critical need to preserve what is left of our natural world. WEC was founded in 2007. Our home-based facility here in Moore Park is a part of a worldwide conservation coalition. We are an accredited member of the Feline Conservation Federation, where I served as vice president for four years and continue to participate. WEC is an active member of the Zoological Association of America. In addition, I serve as vice president on the Board of Directors for the International Wildlife Conservation Education Coalition and Rare Species Fund. It is through this organization that we raise much-needed funds and distribute them to support conservation projects in the following parts of the world: Africa, Antarctica, Asia, Australia, Europe, North America, and South America. I thank you for your time here today, and should you have any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Name and address, Lisa.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Woodburn. I'm with Jensen Design and Survey, and I'm here today representing Patty and the WEC project. Okay. We have some additional slides to show. There we are. Okay. So this is a slide of the facility. It's outlined in red. And the reason for this slide is just to, again, show that it's surrounded by large agricultural properties, very sparsely populated area. This is a close-up aerial of the facility, again, looking at it. And I was kind of wanting to show this, because I know, Mr. Duquesne, you mentioned that maybe there was some, or what did you mention, that there was some homes, maybe up on a hillside with a country club and, you know, the golf course? This is the view that they would see. I mean, it's, it looks like any other type of agricultural use, and it's very well screened with landscaping around it on all sides. This is, again, another picture of the site plan that Jay had showed earlier. I was just highlighting here in blue are the proposed feline cages, and in yellow are the proposed raptor cages. This is a 3D, kind of a elevation model of the enclosures. Mainly on this, we wanted to point out the various levels of fencing around the tiger exercise area and the tiger enclosure. There's multiple layers of fencing and barbed wire around that tiger enclosure and tiger exercise area, and there'll be more pictures of that we'll show in other slides. This is a slide of one of the large raptor enclosures. Here's a slide of where the snow owls are housed. The structure there is a temperature-controlled, climate-controlled structure for the owls to be able to go into if it gets too hot. This is one of the small raptor enclosures. There are two small feline enclosures on the property. This is one of the small feline enclosures. This is the other one. This is the enclosure for Max, the mountain lion that you saw in the video. On the left there, you see- On the left there, you see where his enclosure actually is. It has the solid roof over it, and then the rest of it is his exercise area. This is a picture of the critical care unit that's in the back of Patty's house. And this is a picture of the tiger exercise area. Again, you can see here there's a fence immediately adjacent, or surrounding, the exercise area. That is 14 feet tall with two feet of barbed wire, angled barbed wire on top of it. Then behind it is another level of fencing. We'll see some more of that later in some safety slides. Here's a picture of the actual tiger enclosure. It's 15 feet tall and has a barbed wire on top and has the tigers are in there with the solid roof. Compatibility. In talking to Patty when she first came to me and we talked about this project, I mentioned to her it was going to be very important to get your neighbors to understand the project and hopefully support your project. And so Patty did some incredible outreach. She went and spoke to all her neighbors. She explained the project to them. She invited them to come onto the property, then do tours, and the results of that are included in your staff report, Exhibit 13. We have a petition signed by 100% of the neighbors within 1,000 feet of this property, fully supporting the project. The location of the project, we're close to the America's Teaching Zoo at Moore Park College. This allows easily accessible internship opportunities for the students at the college. Also, it provides a reciprocal evacuation support system in case of emergency at either one of the facilities. We are fully screened from public view, both with vegetation and with the eight-foot-tall fence that's got the screening material on it. And also, as we said earlier, we're surrounded by large agricultural lots, sparse population. Safety is of utmost importance to everyone who works at WEC. There is an animal trainer onsite 24/7 who is trained in the handling of all of the animals on the property. We have a safety plan. It's included in your Exhibit 7. That safety plan is followed. There's protocols included in there, both for everyday operations and also in case of emergency situations. They have drills that they run twice a year for, you know, emergency situations. And they also have someone from the Fish and Wildlife Service come and give them training on the use of chemical restraints on an annual basis. That person comes and trains. There are self-closing gates on the exterior. There's a double gate system on the enclosures for the large cats. In the exterior gate on those enclosures, we will be putting a self-closing mechanism on those gates per the requirement of the Sheriff Department. And there are security cameras placed in strategic locations along the perimeter of the property, and also there is a security guard who come to the property in the evening. They get there about 9 o'clock at night, stay till 5:00 in the morning, and they walk the perimeter in the evening to just make sure it's safe. Here's an example of the tiger enclosure we talked about before, and the, this is a 10-foot-high perimeter fence with a barbed wire that's around the tiger exercise area. This isn't the perimeter fence around the entire site. This is around the enclosure. This is the, this is an example of the double gate system into the tiger facility. We have the exterior gate where Patty is in this, is the interior gate. The exterior gate will have, like you said, a self-closing mechanism on it. This is a slide that shows the double lock system at the tiger enclosure. And we have a couple of slides here just showing the multiple layers of fencing. The fence on the left is the immediate fence around the tiger exercise area. Again, that's 14 foot high with angled barbed wire on top of it. Then past that, you'll see the security fence, the screen security fence with, that's 10 feet high with the barbed wire. This is another picture of the multiple layers of fencing around the tiger exercise area. And again, this is from another angle. You'll see the multiple layers of fencing around the tiger exercise area. And this last one here, this is a slide of the perimeter fencing around the entire facility, eight feet tall with barbed wire on it, and it has the security, the security, I'm sorry, the cloth, the covering. So that concludes my comments, and now John Hecht is just going to come up and make some closing comments. Thank you.
The reason why is there are people, because now we have all the streaming technology and all that. If they come in, that way they know who's talking.
Sure. John Hecht with Sespe Consulting, 374 Poli Street, Suite 200 Ventura, representing Wildlife and Environmental Conservation. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. First, I'm going to answer quickly a couple of the questions that Ms. Dukas posed in her early comment. The Eagle Canyon sign is simply, was placed there to provide people a notification of where to turn. The facility generally stays fairly low-profile, so unlike a commercial facility where you'd have a big sign advertising everyone you're there, this simply is a way to let drivers know, oh, that's where I need to turn when they've been told that that's a marker. Regarding the barbed wire fence on the gate, we're inspected routinely by the state and federal officials for fencing. We also have a condition that we have to go back to the Sheriff's Department, and if we need to put barbed wire on the top of that gate, that's fine. It's not something that's come up before, so we'll certainly ask that question. The extension cord, Jada is a serval who has arthritis, and that extension cord is running to provide power to a heating pad for the serval. And that's, those are the answers to the question that you had earlier. A quick summary of the project. You've heard it many times. It's the mission of it is education, rehabilitation, conservation, birds and felines, medium and small cats, and some large cats, up to 53 animals is what is in our proposed CUP. Unlike other facilities, we are not involved in the entertainment industry or in any commercial aspects of that industry with these animals. The large animals, the apex predators, never leave the facility except in cases of emergency or in cases of treatment. It is their home. They don't want to leave. They stay there. We take up about nine acres of an 11-acre parcel. Patty and your organization has national and international affiliations. When you see the full story of what they do, it's quite amazing, from providing lights to people in India to support in other areas as well. And we have maintained and continued to maintain all the state and federal wildlife permits, and as Lisa described, we put safety first, and there is an experienced trainer onsite at all times. Our commitment is to be in compliance with all the requirements, so we've worked closely with county staff. There are 56 conditions that are proposed as part of the CUP, and we can accept every one of them and look forward to complying with them. The one request we would make, and it is a simple request in terms of economy, staff has recommended a five-year conditional use permit term. The other five facilities have 10- or sometimes 20-year terms. This process is expensive, and it costs WEC money. We've been there for six years without any complaints from the neighbors, without any complaints from the wildlife agencies, so we would ask that we not be given 20 years like some of the other facilities, but simply that we be allowed to not have to come back for renewal for 10 years. And that the planning director should be able to review our conditions on our compliance every, on a five-year basis, but simply to avoid the cost of going through the whole county process of renewal, which includes filling out a 60-page form and that whole process. We just prefer to wait. And with that, we are here to answer any questions. I can answer some. Patty is here, who really knows the operation, and Lisa as well. So thank you very much for your time today, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Hecht, we do have Patty down as a speaker. Is she just here to answer questions?
She's here for questions, yes.
Okay, fine. Again, understand that you will have the final say.
Absolutely.
Regardless of what happens here, so if there's something Ms. Perry wants to say at that time, she's certainly welcome to do so.
Absolutely.
All right. Any questions of the applicant?
Of Patty?
Of, she's here, available for questions, so would you like to talk to her? Ms. Perry, if you could please step forward. Commissioner Dukas would like to talk to you. Name and address, please.
Patty Perry, 11952 Broadway Road, Moore Park, California.
Thank you. Mr.?
First, thank you allowing me to come visit the site. It was very interesting.
Thank you for coming.
I quite enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Even though I forgot, Brian and I were nearly sprayed by-
We always try to warn people ahead of time.
Commissioner Dukas pushed me in front during that incident.
They're territorial. This is my house. No, they're telling you that.
Luckily, luckily, we knew what was going on because we've been to the Santa Barbara Zoo where they have it very prominently signed, and there are many experiences that people have had that we are lucky enough not to share. I noticed that in our staff report, there's something about walking the animals and how they're done, but could you go through that for me?
We take the raptors out for training. We use them in off-site education programs and also in order to train them. When we're getting them on the glove, we go for long walks around the facility, and also we have a master falconer that works with us. He's here today, and he trains me and helps me, and the bird's in our free flight. So the ones that can fly, we provide that enrichment for them, too. The others don't go out.
I was going to ask, are any of the other animals walked in the facility?
No, they stay in their compounds.
Okay. Unless they need to be-
Unless it's an emergency, like a surgery or something.
Right. Okay. And when I was there, I also forgot to disclose that I asked to see where the food handling facility was, and they declined. And I'm curious. You have to feed them.
I know.
Where's the food at?
Well, there was, the reason, I can explain that easily. I was told that I was to have no contact when you came with you, and so a lot of the food prep, our food is prepackaged, so they're primarily fed out of packages. And the packages are, with the exception of the rodents, the other, we put supplements and vitamins. So the packages are open, the supplements and vitamins are on the package. The packages are placed in a cart, and they're carted around to the individual enclosures, and they're fed out. And any prep that needs to be done is in, I have a big center island in my home, and I was in there, and I was told not to have any contact with you, so you're welcome to come back.
Well, I was just curious, and again, I kept on comparing it to the, I'm sure you followed in the news, the Malibu tigers. And I was interested in vector control, you know, is this something that's going to be a nuisance or an attraction to any animals that might be in the area? So that's why I was asking about it.
Well, we're required by the federal and state permitting agencies to meet certain requirements and specifications, and we are, and also the county animal services, and we're inspected every year, and our food prep's inspected every year, and we have to maintain very high levels of sanitation and control.
Okay. And it looked like it was in tip-top shape.
Thank you.
My observation there.
Thank you.
Of course, if I surprised you instead of having to, you know, I always, I always wonder, you know, if somebody knows you're coming. I know if you were coming to my house, I'd clean up. But if you surprised me-
I can answer that, too. First of all, we're inspected by all the agencies, and they don't tell us when they're coming, so we're ready every day for that reason, but personally, I happen to be extremely particular within my home and out of my, I mean, that's the way it is. Anybody can come anytime, and that's the way the place is.
I'm gratified to hear that, yeah, because I did not see anything that looked out of place. Everything was raked, the water was fresh, it looked very humane.
And everybody's wonderful. The volunteers and the staff are incredible about me being that picky. They never get mad at me for it, so I'm lucky.
Yeah. They, it's not within our purview or expertise, but my general observation was that it was, that animals were well-kept.
Thank you.
Regarding the barbed wire on the main gate, what also captured my attention when reading over the staff report was not that, as, that in addition to, you know, the worry that animals could get out, there was more, I don't know, I don't know if it's real or likely, chance that people might want to get in.
You know-
And that's what, that's, I thought-
And it's a viable observation. That particular gate, we have, we have purchased an automatic, a sophisticated system for it. That gate's going, the new one's going in. And in terms of the barbed wire, that'll go on the top of it. That'll go on the top of the new gate that's going to be an electric gate.
Oh, I didn't catch that then. Okay.
That gate's going to be changed completely. It'll be a brand-new gate. It's going to be, we have the, an electric gate system that, as we speak, is going in. We've had it there for a couple of months. It's just a matter of getting to the project. So that one's going in now, a new electric gate system on that gate you're talking about. And there, we'll put three strands of barbed wire on the top of the new gate with the new electric system. It'll be automatic.
Okay. And the other thing that I wanted to ask you is, I was very intrigued with this idea of partnering with Moore Park College, which has been in the news lately because of its laying cub, and I'm familiar with their program. How, how many minutes away is, are people from you? I'm interested in what kind of partnership you have in case of an emergency, if there was some kind of reason why you had to move animals out of the facility. How quickly could you get help?
Well, it's pretty much always there. I always have help there. We have all of our crates and transport containers at strategic locations on the property, so that at any time we needed to do that, we can. We have emergency vehicles for transport on the property. They're on the upper part of the property. They're all parked in line. And in addition to our emergency vehicles, we have, our foreman has a lot up Broadway Road, maybe five, 10 minutes up Broadway Road, and he has additional equipment. He has semis and flat beds, so he keeps the big stuff up there. 10 minutes, 10 minutes.
Okay.
Just for that one.
I just noticed that, again, in comparing, that one was very isolated. It would take a very long time to get there for help to arrive.
Ours is onsite.
And, and also this partnership with Moore Park. Moore Park's pretty close.
Moore Park's 10 minutes away, and-
There, that's what I wanted.
And how that was born was that I was having a discussion with them, and there was an emergency for them prior to our being in the area and moving there, I guess, and some of the animals, the animals need to be evacuated, and I guess some of them were not able to be evacuated and stayed at the facility. So I said, well, don't, you don't need to do that again, because we have enough equipment to move all your animals, and we have enough acreage to put them there and hold them there while the emergency passes. And so conversely, if we get into a situation where we have to transport our animals, we can hold them at their facility. So it was a win-win.
Okay. I was interested in that 10-minute timeframe. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of Ms. Perry at this time?
Yes, Ms. Perry. Good morning. A trailer to the response you just made in response to Commissioner Dukas's question about emergency response and removal. I sensed there was a prior operator at this location before you assumed ownership. Did I hear that?
They were-
Are you the original animal?
Yes.
There were no animals on the property beforehand?
No.
Okay, my, thank you. It was my misunderstanding. How many cats, felines are on the property now?
Small, including small to large, total?
Yes.
We have, well, I can name them. We have the four tigers and the cougar, and we have the Eurasian lynx, and we have two African servals. Those are small cats.
And an ocelot?
No ocelots. No. Those are, you probably, you probably saw the two servals.
And so part of your presentation talked about the rehabilitation of the animals and putting them back into the natural environment. How do you do that with the cats that you have? have?
The cats are not included. The cats are, the conservation portion that you saw at the end of the video, the cats are, most of the cats are part of a global conservation effort. Those cats are already extinct in the wild or critically endangered, and they are produced in captive breeding programs to be used specifically in organizations for education. So, you have it in your records. I'm under a very strict contract with the global conservation program that those cats are provided for education for our facility. And the strict guidelines are that they are, they are not for breeding, they are to be sterilized, and they are to be kept under specific conditions. They are not to be used for any commercial use. They are never to leave the property. Again, if you want to go over that, the specifics of that contract, it's very strict, and it's in your records.
Yeah, I noticed that. There's no effort to relocate them to zoos, which also provide an educational opportunity for those.
Well, that's what we do. We do education. If we get, for instance, if we get with the raptors or maybe other small mammals, if we get those in for rehabilitation, and they cannot be returned to the wild, they go to the zoos. I have many, many animals that have come through our program that are in all of our zoos through the country. But the animals that we maintain for education are there for life, and we use them for education. That's our mission, is conservation, education, to do outreach.
Okay, and I grasp that. My comments specifically are toward the felines.
Right.
Those animals that are rehabbed are not, obviously cannot be returned back to the wild, or for one reason or another, whether they're endangered, whatever, they're, they are not destined to end up in a zoo someplace.
No, no.
National Zoo, State Zoo, they will always stay at that premise.
Always stay there for education through the life of our program.
And so, your source of these animals are from across the country?
Yes, yes, they're from all over the country. They're from captive breeding programs, and they are allocated to educational programs. And yes, they're from all over the country. The tigers came from Tiger's Preservation Station, which is the largest captive breeder of extinct and critically endangered species in the world. And those tigers were donated to our program to represent their species on the West Coast, three of which have been extinct in the wild since 1935. There's no place to put them back in the wild.
And the documentation before us also includes information about expansion, construction of additional-
Yes.
-enclosures for felines?
Two.
What is-
There were two.
Right. What is the planned capacity or intended capacity as far as number of animals, of feline animals you'll have there? And that's really where my questions are going, because that's really, I think, a major issue as it relates to safety. So, if you could kind of hold your comments.
We have, John would probably be best off, because he did the guidelines on that with the camera.
Okay. How many animals are we going to have there?
There currently are-
How many cats?
There currently are eight felines. You're adding two feline enclosures, which would bring it up to 10. There are no current plans for when those animals might come. The cats that Patty has now, as she says, are destined to stay there. If another cat is made available, then it would be added to their education program. Current plans are for two additional enclosures, which, you know, would house two cats. If an injured cat were to show up, which hasn't happened, then there would be the opportunity to accept that injured animal and then rehabilitate it and transfer it in or out as well. So, while that's not the case with the current animals, that could be the case with some of the additional capacity. Right now, they don't have additional feline enclosure capacity for either additional educational animals or additional animals to be rehabilitated. But in either case, there are two proposed enclosures, which would take that number from eight up to about 10.
And so, if another, if an injured feline presented itself in theory on your doorstep today, you couldn't accept it?
Yes, we can accept rehabilitation, and we do have small enclosure facilities. If an injured feline came in, our, what we do is, we bring it in and we assess it, and we see how serious it is or isn't. Usually, it goes straight to our vet, Dr. Molnar, and it has a complete workup, digital x-rays and-
Ms. Perry, could you move towards the microphone a little bit? There you go.
Yeah, sorry.
You have a public out there you don't know.
I'm sorry. And so, we assess it and decide how serious it is. It may stay at the vet hospital, or it will come back to our critical care unit, which there's plenty of room there. At the end of its rehabilitation time, normally, a cat like that will be transferred to another facility because there wouldn't be a place for it in our particular program.
Okay, so there would be another facility it would be transferred to once it was rehabbed?
A zoo or another educational facility such as ours that was permitted.
Okay, so it might go to a zoo? Okay.
Yeah. And if any large cats were brought to our attention, because we cooperate with law enforcement, we don't ever take those. We don't take large cats. I have a networking system where I work with California Fish and Wildlife, where if there are any mature cats, they don't come to me. They are networked to somewhere else on our list.
Okay. And you've been in operation since 2002, or, excuse me, 2008?
I've been at this, we purchased this facility in 2008. I did wildlife, I've been doing wildlife for probably 15 or more years.
And you're the only resident onsite?
Right.
I thought I saw at far the expansion request, the request for additional residents on the site?
Yes, yeah.
Tell us about that.
For keepers, for keeper housing, yes.
So, there would be-
Animal keepers.
At some point, there would be a second resident?
Yes.
That would be employed-
Yes.
-by the facility?
Yes.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, how did the violation of the permit come to pass? How was it, you were issued a violation?
I, well, when I, when we-
Was it-
I have, I, you know, of course, over the last 15 to 20 years, I've obtained permits. I probably, I think I have more permits than anybody in California related to wildlife in terms of the scope of what I do with all the federal agencies, our state agency, and then also our local county agency with animal regulations. When I moved into the area, I had, I went to county animal regs, and we obtained our permits. We got, there were eight, and we obtained our permits, but I'd never even heard of a land use permit for animal keeping. I was just completely unaware of it. It's my own ignorance. I thought I had every permit known to mankind, so I didn't know.
I'm just curious who rang the bell on that one.
I don't know. Who knows? I don't know.
Obviously, staff or somebody from county ended up out at that facility and did an inspection and found there was a problem. Can staff respond to that?
We have someone from our code compliance that can probably speak to that. I'm not sure. I'd have to research the file to see if the complaint was a confidential complaint or if it was come upon, it was confidential complaint, so.
I think I can answer that, okay.
I think we have a new speaker. If you could introduce yourself?
Yes, Lisa Woodburn with Jensen Design. My understanding in talking with Patty is the reason this all came about was, they had a shed or something on the property that was starting to fall apart. And the insurance, their insurance company said, "You know, you've got to get rid of that shed." So, they contacted building and safety about, "We need to demo this. What do we do?" They demoed the shed. Someone from building and safety came out to inspect it and said, "Wow, what do you, do you have a land use permit for this?" And they, and Patty was like, "What are you talking about, a land use permit?" And that's where it started. It wasn't driven from a complaint from anyone. It was their own calling out-
Oh, yeah.
-of building and safety.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Onside, you have a question?
Good morning.
Morning.
Obviously, if you had experienced the last go-around with Malibu and tigers, you'd understand that health and safety is primary to all of us. And I have questions regarding staffing, the animals, and the enclosures. Could you outline to me the staffing of the facility, including yourself, whoever is on property, what training, what licenses they have?
Right. The staffing on the facility, myself, and then our management and executive assistant is Deb Marietta. She's been there for six years. She has been six years' animal experience with, one-on-one with all these animals. We also rely heavily on the Moor Park College program, the kids coming out of there. We take their, we intern with the kids and take their volunteers, and also we hire them coming out of the program. Our lead keeper is out of the Moor Park program. Our falconer is 20 years now out of the Moor Park program, and then there's myself. And then, we also have maintenance, it's kind of a jack-of-all-trades situation. The people that we have that are doing maintenance and so forth also participate with the animals, and they've been there for several years.
Licenses required?
No.
For animal-
My license. I carry the licenses.
Well, I understand the governmental requirements, but individuals not required to be licensed?
No.
And your people are experienced, you're telling me?
Right.
So, how many people on property, on the course of an eight to five a day, how many people on property?
How many, well, between volunteers and staff, I think there's probably six, eight people, yeah.
Six.
Pardon me?
Six.
Six, about six, and then added interns or volunteers.
Okay, you indicated that you're a permanent resident.
Right.
And so, theoretically, 24/7, unless off somewhere.
Right.
You also indicated, I believe, that there is private security. Could you explain that to me, please?
Yes, yes. They're there every night, seven nights a week, eight hours a night.
Okay, and this is for you, an opportunity to go out to dinner, I suppose?
I don't even get to do that. I have no life outside that place, but that's good for me.
Okay, so, in terms of paid employees, do we have paid employees?
We have paid staff, and we have, we have interns and volunteers.
Okay. I'd like to, for a minute, ask you about the enclosures. As we went through the last go-around, it was my recollection that the enclosures had certain specifications required of them to get licenses, I mean, gauge of steel, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yes.
And do you meet all those requirements?
No, we exceed them.
You exceed them?
By far.
Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes, so we have been in contact with the USDA and the California Fish and Game, and they have sent their requirements, and they have sent their inspection reports, and that, that is, that is correct. They're exceeding the requirements by the state and federal agency for their caging.
I recall in the previous permit request, we had roofs over these enclosures. That's not a requirement? Was that something extra?
We have a condition, and we sat down and spoke with Ms. Perry and her representatives last week to really talk about that. When we had the other case before us, you know, we called the Santa Barbara Zoo. The Santa Barbara Zoo has roofing on there. As we investigated the incident of the escape of the tiger from the San Francisco Zoo, that they didn't have roofs, and we were concerned about it, and the applicant in front of us at that time just agreed to put the roofs on, so it wasn't an issue. Mr. Heck came in and said that they had evidence to the contrary, that tigers don't climb, and I was reading that evidence this morning in your Exhibit 14. And there's a very detailed discussion on that tiger incident in here. And this whole packet is full of information about why you don't really need to have a roof on it. And so, the condition was to say that you can either roof it or not roof it, but you have to come up with a design that meets the requirements of the federal, the state, the county, the sheriff. And so, we've kind of put that decision off to saying, "We'll look at it if your project gets approved to what it can and can't be." But I do believe they put quite a bit of significant evidence on the record in Exhibit 14 to say that it's not necessary.
Okay. John, you have something to say?
If I could just add one thing, John Heck, Sesspi Consulting. The only area that isn't roofed is the exercise area for the tigers, and that has the 14-foot-high fence. Where the tigers sleep has a roof, the cougar has a roof. So, the daytime exercise area is the area that doesn't have a roof. And when we went back and looked at how San Francisco handles it and how the vets handled it, it was clear that, you know, in our mind, it wasn't a requirement, but what we agreed to do is make sure that the ultimate decision is one that is approved by all the agencies and the county sheriff.
Referring only to the tigers and possibly the mountain lion, any place they're located less than that maximum height? It looked like when you transferred between cages, the height of that transfer area or gated area wasn't the same height as the other.
Federal and state requirements for fence heights, we have met all, met and exceeded them. The federal and state agencies recommend open-top enrichment exercise area for large carnivores. The tigers don't jump. If they, they don't jump and they don't climb. If a tiger had to push him to jump, it would maybe be two or three feet. So, our fence height requirements exceed all of the agencies, and we are not required to have all the layers of fencing that we need. We have added further layers of fencing, and we have also added the barb arms, and we also have hot wire above. So, we've also added barb arms that go in both directions.
Are you saying you've electrified the wire?
We have electrified the, we have a hot wire around the whole tiger compound.
Okay.
As well as the extensions of barbed wire. But there wouldn't be any possible way that they could get up and over, no way. And if they did, we have another layer of fencing, and if they got out of there, we have another layer of fencing. So, they're layered in.
Okay.
Yeah.
They don't jump? Do they dig?
They don't jump. They don't, they jump, they can jump horizontally up onto their table, but they don't jump vertically.
I understand. Do they dig?
No, no, no. And all of our, and again, all the security measures that are taken around the perimeter of the fencing even below far exceed the requirements that we-
You mean below ground level?
Pardon me?
Is this-
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And they have to have Schedule 40 piping below and so forth. And then, in their, in their primary enclosure that's roofed, they have to have a concrete, they have concrete around the perimeter with the Schedule 40 piping, and a concrete slab for feeding.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the applicant this time? You will have another shot at her. Commissioner? If you want to talk, talk.
Okay, well, when I was on the site, I did suggest that maybe we could have, I read through the safety protocol. It's extremely comprehensive.
Yeah.
So, my question was, have you ever had to use it? What kind of incidents-
Never.
-may you have had out at the site?
Never.
Okay.
We have really strict measures, and we have backup, backup, backup. Nobody, nobody does anything alone there. They have somebody behind them monitoring the gates, making sure they lock them, making sure the food went in properly. They are required by our protocol to have somebody with them at all times. So, nobody, you know, there's human error always in life, period. So, we try to prevent that by having backup, backup,
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Perry. John has represented. The only concern you have is the five-year period. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we'll get to that when I get to staff. Number two, if you will, Ms. Perry, if you're not the one, I read one doctor of veterinary medicine saying that these larger animals tend to get very stressed when they're moved in and out of their environments, was adrenaline and cortisol. You say you practice this twice a year to-
Yes.
-for emergency procedures. Can you address the distress level, or would you prefer the, I know I've got a vet that's going to come up and talk later.
Yeah, he can address that. I think it's best.
Okay. Then the last thing, which I'll talk to staff about, I didn't see a whole lot on lighting in the conditional, conditions or in the MND. And my concern is, having been a small boy in San Diego, went to the zoo all the time, was that some of your animals are very nocturnal in their sensitivity to light. So, if that's something you want to address, or if the vet would probably be the better person to discuss that?
I'm not sure what your question is there.
Normally, in these situations, particularly where security is involved in a conditional use permit, there's a certain minimum amount of lighting that is required, usually by the sheriff's department. I didn't see a lot of that in here. I also am very sensitive to that area out there off Broadway, the fact of light pollution. So, there's the balance of security.
Right.
The quality of the animal's life, and then also the light pollution, so.
Well, we have motion sensor lights all over the property.
Okay.
So, they go on whenever, and we just point, we just don't point them into the cage. We point them away from the cage. So, because it's not, you know, we don't want to light up the animals. We want to light up any possible intruder. So, those, I think there's five or six of them just on the tiger compound itself. I think there's, there's two on the cougar. They're all over. They're, you know, solar-powered.
All right. All right, it's just a concern that I brought up again, because there's three factors here, as I described. So, we can discuss that later when I get to it.
We also have some dim lights that stay on, that go on when it gets dark, stay on.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have for the applicant. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rodriguez.
I assume this is the appropriate time to ask the question. There's a variety of speakers, potential speakers here. Since we've had a lot of comments and questions related to public safety and our applicant obviously has a public safety protocol in place, it sounds like it's rather extensive. And because of the fact that a couple of people in the back of the audience drove all the way from Moor Park, I'd like to hear from public safety on this issue.
Sure.
If I may.
I tell you what, I still haven't opened a public hearing, so, but hang on. Is there any questions of staff? I know just reserved. So how about?
I'm just going to wait till the end.
Till the end?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
No.
You sure? All right. If there's, if staff have a problem taking testimony from representatives? All right. If you please come forward. And again, this is informational of the staff and the applicant's side of the table. This is also helpful for the public. They may gain additional information for their testimony. Name and address.
My name's Steve Wade. I'm the captain of the Ventura County Sheriff's Office out of the Moor Park Station. And it's 610 Spring Road, Moor Park, California, 93021.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I assume you reviewed the public safety protocols in this case?
We reviewed it. It looks like it's appropriate for what they have there on site. And we also conducted a site visit and a tour, similar to what some of the commissioners took a tour of.
Okay. Did you have any input into it? Or was it satisfactory as presented?
Yeah, we, we came up, we came up with some recommendations at the request of staff. Let me turn to those recommendations here. I believe there was, was five recommendations that the sheriff's office came up with through our staff. First was self-closing gates of some sort. Doesn't matter to us what type of self-closing, whether it's a hydraulic or a spring-fed or something. Again, as Patty mentioned, one of the things that we look at is human error and trying to reduce any sort of human error where somebody might just leave a lock out of a gate, not close it behind them. They came up with the, not only the self-closing gates, but the enclosures, what we call Sally ports. Obviously, my experience comes from the custody, one of the most dangerous animals, people. And so it's one of those things where we look at, where can we go redundant? Where can we be looking at those things that are kind of fail safes? And it was clear that they had those Sally ports already placed in all of their enclosures. And then my understanding is since that point, they have agreed to do the, some of the auto closings and on the entry gates into those enclosures. Housing and transport of the animals, we made a recommendation in the very beginning in regards to GPS. Knowing probably little about the behavior of the animals, we asked for GPS to be placed on the animals all the time. After discussions with the applicants, it was, it was provided to us that they rub, they scratch, they bite things off, any type of devices and such. Our feeling was that as long as there's a GPS system on the animal when it's moved from its enclosure to somewhere else, because obviously our concern was that if something escaped the enclosure, that would be concerning to us. So that GPS system and in discussions with them, they agreed that yes, that was a kind of a middle ground on that. They're not constantly replacing their GPSs, but they actually will be placing those on when there's movement. And that seemed reasonable precaution for that.
Is that the result of the experience the sheriff's department had several years ago when a cat was on the loose in Moor Park and ultimately was located and killed?
Well, and, and yes, although we, I think, Fish and Game, Sheriff's Office, everybody kind of learned, even the community, learned from that experience. It wasn't a facility that was a facility like this one. So there's a lot more safeguards that we're looking at here. But my concern is obviously for the general public, that if this occurred, there's some redundant systems involved. And that if the, if we had to track that cat, we would have that ability to do that very, very quickly. GPS satellite, you know, we use trackers, we use all kinds of things to do that. It seemed credible for us. I really couldn't get into the basics with you, but I'm sure that that's out there and they should be able to come up with something.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. The other thing was transportation, which I just went over. Security cameras, they do have security cameras on campus. One of the things that the sheriff's department is really working hard on is, is we have a new program, ARCTIC, and it's a real-time information center. Anything that's being built new, whether it's a hotel in Moor Park or whether it's a new facility anywhere in the county, we're recommending that cameras, IP address cameras be installed in the location. So I'll give you a real quick about ARCTIC. What happens is we have a group of dispatchers that are analysts truly. And when we're sending, we receive a call into our dispatch center, we're sending a deputy or resources out to a location. If there's a camera system on site, it will allow us to take a look at the cameras before we get there, provide information from those cameras to the deputies responding to give them a better picture of what they're walking into. So this is one of the things that we were looking at, asking for IP address cameras to be installed in the location. And the applicant had no issues with that, so when we, when we talked to him. Notifications. I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I believe currently that if they have an escape, they'll give us a call and we'll respond to that. I had some concern over that in regards to, we would like a phone call, we would like to know if they have an escape or an animal actually exits their enclosure, not the perimeter. So that gives us a step forward on that. We can work, it's kind of like we work with the fire department or anybody else. You know, they're the animal experts. We're not going to go hunting in their facility for their animal. That's something that they are responsible for. But we want to be a part of that. So it's, we're part of the early warning system. If it's escaped from the enclosure by chance, we are aware of it. We put a deputy and a supervisor on site. Then obviously it's check four, they find it in, within the perimeter, everything's good. Animal is recaptured and placed back into the location. If not, and it's escaped its actual perimeter of the facility, then when we're one step ahead of the process and we're not getting a call, maybe an hour late, we want to be a part of that. So we're, we can work with them and provide them resources if they need them. So that was one of the things. And then obviously animal escapes. And one of the, one of the other things was a documentation of what they have on site all the time. So they can make their rounds. They already comply with this, my understanding is, that we need to be able to have a list if we respond to know what they have on site. So, and could provide that. Other than that, those were all of our recommendations.
You, as a matter of practice, practically don't have a listing on your PRM.
I'm sorry?
You don't have a listing at the Camrio, at Moor Park PD of the animal inventory at the facility?
Currently not.
You depend on staff here to provide it?
Correct. And that would also go for Moor Park College. We don't, we don't keep, we're not provided at this time.
Okay. Do you also, do you have, in your facility, a copy of the, the emergency response plan for that facility? Did they provide that to you?
Not at this time, but my understanding is, we will be working collaboratively with, with the facility. And we made arrangements to, little at a time, to get our deputies out to the location, to familiarize them with the location and similar to what they've done with the fire department.
Sure. So they'll incorporate it into the training you provide?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I notice we have a sergeant down here. Is there any additional information you might provide or just to answer questions?
He's a driver.
Oh. He's the driver. Once upon a time, somebody was a driver too, Rick.
He's my administrative sergeant. He also, he also reviewed this and everything that I just talked about was information that we were provided, all of us.
So he would be the coordinating individual or his position would be as far as the follow-ups?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions to the captain? Commissioner Dukas?
I don't know if you followed the Malibu tiger issue at all?
It was out of our Camrio station, our West County side. We did, we did take some of the suggestions that were made by the commander of the Camrio station and kind of started that as groundwork when we started looking at this one.
One of the things that was proposed with that project was that the trainers were armed. Do you think that that's appropriate in this case to have the trainers armed with, you know, with something that could stop the tiger if, if it was necessary?
I'll be careful with recommendations because I think that each, each individuals and/or companies need to decide whether they want to be armed or not, because there's a training aspect that's involved in that. And I think that they may have to make a conscious decision. When you say armed, you know, a firearm that would actually euthanize one of the tigers or one of the large cats, okay, that's, that's going to be, for the most part, probably a large caliber rifle or shotgun. I think that what also needs to be thought about maybe in that is a tranquilizer gun of some sort to bring that, if for us, it would be that less-than-lethal component. For us, it's the taser or the beanbag shotgun. Obviously, for me, I think that, you know, putting down the animal is that last choice, but it has to be, it has to be thought of. Keep in mind, when law enforcement arrives on scene, they have that ability. So I, I don't know. I'm, I won't make a recommendation that they have firearms on site, only because I think that that has to fit what they have. And they are going to have to have people trained in that discipline to be able to utilize those in a safe manner.
Thank you for that information.
Anything else with Captain Wade? Okay. You and your driver, we thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, gentlemen. All right. Any other further questions of staff-type personnel?
Staff?
Yeah, well, yeah, but you'll get another chew, I mean, opportunity. All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, again, we appreciate your patience. We will open the public hearing. I currently have five cards, all in favor. I'll call them in the order that I, we have received. And that's the policy we've set here. The first one will be Mike Lynn Hines, followed by Brittany Gonzalez, and then by Atilla Molinar. All right. So Ms. Hines? Name and address, please.
Mike Lynn Hines, Zoo Operations Supervisor at Moor Park College. Address 1112 Alamos Drive, Thousand Oaks, California.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing me to speak on behalf of WEC. As I stated in my letter of November 20, 2014, I am offering my personal support of this request that the county grant WEC the necessary approval to operate in Ventura County. It's advantageous that WEC is so close to Moor Park College, as our facility can lend mutual support in four key areas. Personnel resources, emergency planning, conservation activities, and fundraising. First, having WEC close by provides our exotic animal training and management, students, local opportunities for volunteering, internships, and employment. Second, having a facility permitted for exotic animals in such close proximity provides both facilities with flexibility to assist each other in times of emergency. Each facility can provide support with evacuation assistance or a location to park vehicles in which evacuated animals can remain secured within for the duration of the emergency. Third, there's a need for additional wildlife rehabilitation and conservation facilities in our local community. Though there are such facilities in Ventura County, they're often at full capacity and unable to take additional animals in need. America's Teaching Zoo has experienced firsthand the commitment that WEC has to conservation of wildlife. They've demonstrated their commitment by providing America's Teaching Zoo with birds of prey that due to health reasons cannot be returned to the wild. These birds serve as conservation ambassadors for our students and the exotic animal training and management program and our guests that visit America's Teaching Zoo. Second, our facility, excuse me, I've lost my train of thought here. Fourth, we support each other's fundraising efforts. WEC has been very supportive in our fundraising efforts, especially in helping to educate our guests with birds of prey, demonstrations at our annual spring spectacular event. Our students routinely volunteer in support of WEC fundraising efforts as well. I'm slightly nervous.
Don't. Just relax.
Did I talk about all four points? Because I've lost my train of thought. Emergency planning? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Personnel resources? Yes. Fundraising and conservation activities? I thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of WEC. May I answer any questions?
Okay, any question of Ms. Hines? Commissioner Dukas?
Sure. Thank you for coming out. And I think it's an important piece of information that we have, that you partner with this facility.
Yes.
And are close by. To your, are you familiar with the wildlife in the area where WCE is, WEC is located?
Wildlife, native wildlife?
Native wildlife.
Sure. Because we have the same type of wildlife that live just outside of our facility as well.
And are there any potential impacts to wildlife from this facility, in your opinion?
I would say no. They have similar precautions to the ones that we take with regard to perimeter fencing to ensure that animals from the wild, native wildlife, don't get into their facility. Those are all regulated, again, by the federal and California Fish and Wildlife Service. So I don't think that that would be an issue.
And in your opinion, or to your knowledge, is there a wildlife corridor? Is there some, you know, something special about this location that would interfere with the native wildlife? That, what I'm familiar with are red-tailed hawks in the area and coyotes, but I don't know what else there is there. I'm wondering if you do.
I would imagine there are bobcats and foxes especially, raccoons, opossums, skunks for the smaller wildlife. I personally don't know of any mountain lions that reside in that area, but certainly there are in the Santa Monica Mountains. I really don't think that the animals themselves would be, the native animals themselves would be impacted by this facility at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Hines? Just one quick. Is Cookie, the scarlet African parrot, still there?
No, I'm sorry. She's not. She passed away several years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Oh. No, sadly, on 9/11, that was the day we accepted her.
Yep.
And Dr. Barker and I, we had, and to listen to her pick up the phone and go, hello?
Yes.
It was like, it's amazing how they can mimic us.
It is. It's very amazing.
Well, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
For your input. Brittany Gonzalez, followed by Dr. Molinar. Name and address, Brittany.
Hello, I'm Brittany Gonzalez. My address is 78 Reading Street, Fillmore, California, 93015. I am the lead keeper and assistant trainer at WEC. I was going into my second year of EDAM, the EDAM program, when a friend at the Humane Society first told me about wildlife and environmental conservation and their internship program. I was very interested in WEC's extensive raptor program and its involvement with wildlife rehabilitation. I immediately contacted Patty Perry and interviewed for the position. I began interning at wildlife and environmental conservation in the summer of 2012. Through my internship, I gained a significant amount of knowledge and hands-on experience with a wide variety of species that reside at the facility. This experience was a significant part of my education because it allowed me to practice the skills and knowledge I had obtained in the EDAM program in a working environment. After my interning for eight months, Patty Perry offered me a position as a part-time keeper. I explained to her my school schedule and we worked on a schedule that would work with my school schedule. And for that, I greatly appreciate the facility and how well they work with the students. The facility's internship program has always and will always put the education of its internship, its interns first. After graduating EDAM in May 2013, I began my full-time position as lead animal keeper and assistant trainer at WEC. As I have grown into my position, I have taken on more responsibilities. I now run the internship program with EDAM and our educational programs. We continue to work very closely with the EDAM students at Moor Park and our education, at Moor Park College, sorry. We currently have five interns from the program, along with several volunteers who have applied to the EDAM program for fall. to the EDAM program for fall 2015. We also have several other volunteers who are studying animal science-related majors at other colleges. Our primary goal for our interns is to give them an educational experience in a professional working environment outside of the EDAM program. I am very grateful for, to WEC because it has allowed me to grow as an employee and as an individual. I continue to learn and become more knowledgeable in my field every day. WEC has given me more educational opportunities than I could ever ask for. I am very proud to be a part of such an amazing facility and all that it contributes to helping wildlife.
Any questions of Ms. Gonzalez? Commissioner Dukas?
Do you interface with small groups that come and visit?
Yes, so I am in charge of booking all of our educational programs. I contact the schools, I meet with the instructors, and we decide whether the program will be onsite or offsite.
Are the tours that the children have similar to the ones that were provided to me and the other commissioner?
Yes, they are, with the exception of, I mean, it's more extensive, of course, and we may occasionally bring out a couple raptors for an up-close and personal encounter.
How close do the children get to the animals?
They are always kept at a safe distance with a backup in between me and the students.
What's the ratio of the number of children to adults supervising the children?
Um, I would say, on average, it's probably one adult to three children.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Ms. Gonzalez? I have one.
Mm-hmm.
Since you're the one who's employed there, been there the longest, and our major concern here is public safety.
Mm-hmm.
At any time or in any situation, have you felt apprehensive about your personal safety being around these animals?
Never.
You feel that the protocols that are in place protect you?
Yes, and I have helped with those protocols, so I definitely feel protected and safe at all times.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time. All right, it's the intent of the commission to hear the last three speakers and then take the appropriate break, so Dr. Mollinar, followed by Douglas Holmes, I think it says, and of course, Mr. Schwaber. Name and address, sir?
Atilla Mollinar, I'm a veterinarian, I live in Calabas, I have a practice in Calabasas, 23815 Ventura Boulevard. It's called All Animals Veterinary Hospital. I know Patty for, I would say 10 years before she started all this quest, and I was helping her with other animals before. When she got these animals, even including the baby cougar, I was there from day one. She, all those animals came to me. I, I go to her place almost three times a month to look at these animals, to provide health care. She calls me at midnight if something's wrong with a bird, she comes in. I have an open policy towards her. I do work with lots of other collections of, I do, I do the movie animal work in Los Angeles, private trainers who have tigers, lions, and other animals, and Patty Perry's facility exceeds the requirements that are set for keeping these animals. She's going beyond and above for more and more of the clients, and I have lots of clients who have lions and tigers and other big animals, including bears. So, I think she is, she is going, she's going a step above everybody else. The other thing is what I like about her is the, is, is the power of education that she can provide to kids with these animals, and how important these animals are as ambassadors for kids to learn about these animals, because if you look at the tiger population in the wild, there's less than 4,000 left, and in about, in about 15 years, they're going to be all extinct. I work with a US Fish and Wildlife undercover agent who went to, to India to look at the smuggling routes of these tigers, and, and the Chinese market eats them up so fast that we won't be able to stop it, so these animals will have to be in captivity in the right hands to educate people and to try to do something to save the species, because unfortunately, tigers, like most other big, big cats, will live in captivity in the future because the wild goes away. In the last 100 years, 97% of the tigers were lost, and they lost 93% of their, of their, of the natural habitat, so we won't be able to stop that. So, these, these facilities are very, very important, that's why her work is so important, and medically, she takes care of these animals really well. Also, the, the quality of, of, of enrichment for these animals. I can always tell if an animal is stressed, like I go, I, I, I've seen more than 120 zoos, I go around the world to look at the zoos, and lots of animals are stressed in a small cage, pacing back and forth. They, they exhibit abnormal behaviors, they chew the tails, they're aggressive, they're, they're stressed. Every time I go to a place, I almost feel like going inside and playing with the tigers, which I'm not supposed to do, but they're so relaxed and they're happy, and, and you can see, you can see that animals are really settled well in their environment, and they're very, very happy to be there. Also, regarding when she transports these cats to my hospital, the cats are trained to go into the crate, and, and when they arrive to my place, the, the stress is, is, is something that it's quite easy to handle for a big cat like that. I, I castrate all three males, and I spray the female tiger just because in captivity it's better for them to, to be like this, because then they won't be bred in captivity. They all are in good shape, they have, they have their blood works done every, every, every two years, everything is fine, the diet is, is, is very good, and every time I go there, I, I find that, that things are, are done in a professional and in a good way for the animals. So, I definitely support her of having this, this facility. Safety-wise, her place is quite safe, tigers will not be able to, to, to jump those fences, even if they were flying, it's not possible. They don't dig, as we spoke before. So, it, safety is, is, is really, really good, and going back to your comment about the firearms, it is very effective to have dart guns in case of something happens, those animals can be tranquilized in minutes, so they can go down and make it sa- safe for everybody. Plus, since these animals are tame and, and handled, even if they break out from the first cage, they will stay inside, they will never leave the premises, that they are so used to living there, that even if they break out from the primary cage, they will stay on the premises, giving enough time for the staff, Patty, me, to come and dart these animals with special dart guns, and they go down quite fast. So, the safety, safety issue-wise, I think, I think the safety is there, and she's one of my favorite clients, I have lots of clients who do this, and I, I really like, like the compassion, she, she's got a huge compassion for these animal, animals, a huge heart, and it, it's, it's a life passion to do this, so if somebody's passionate about these things, I think we should support them to have these animals. Any questions, if you have any questions?
Any questions of the doctor? I have just one.
Yeah.
If you live next door to this compound.
Yeah.
Knowing what you know about it, would you have any concerns about your, you or your family's safety?
I won't, I won't have any concern, because first of all, I, I do this movie animal work for many years. These tigers are, even if the tiger will get loose, let's say, and he faces me in an open space, the tiger will not attack me, he will back off. So, these, these animals, you know, just like if you go to, in India, or I travel around the world, tigers will always run away from people unless they become meat eaters. So, even if, let's say, the tiger, by any miracle, would jump her fence, my fence, and come in my backyard, I wouldn't be too scared about the tiger. So, I, I don't have, I won't have any, any concerns.
Okay. My last question then, doctor, is I addressed earlier the issue of lighting and some of these animals, because they tend to be nocturnal by nature. We have to balance between safety and I have concern for the animal. Is there something we should not do as far as lighting?
Well, you know, having, having the, having the motion, motion lights doesn't bother these animals, and, and they get used to lighting. Tigers, tigers tend to be more day, day hunters than night hunters, but they can, they can see wherever in the dark. The cougar is more of a night animal than, than the tigers are, but for the cougar, the place where he is, he's, he's, he's got his privacy, he can sleep at night, so I don't think there's any issues over there. The motion detector lights are important, and I don't think they cause stress, I mean, they come up and they go back to sleep, so I don't think it's, it's a problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the doctor? We certainly appreciate your put in the letter, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Douglas Holmes, I can't read the handwriting, then followed by Mr. Schwaber, and then we will take a break. Name and address, Doug.
My name is Douglas Holmesy, I own the ranch directly across from the facility, it's 11915 Broadway, and my 87-year-old mother has lived there since the 70s, and she walks the ranch daily for exercise, and so as far as safety, I don't think I would allow her to do that without a large firearm, which, you know, she could not use anyway, but she is very, feels very safe about it. We did tour the facility, it's a very impressive facility, and I have to say that it was two years before we even believed that there were tigers across the street from us, because you can't see them, you can't hear them. Even now, now that I know it's there, I know she has taken out some of the lemon trees, which I'm glad, because it was a dilapidated orchard, and, you know, silled out, and that area is a concern. But, you know, she has planted other, other plants in front of it, and is, it is a very hard-to-find place. We got their mail once, I tried to find how to get into the place, I could not, you know, get in, so I left a little stack of mail down there for her, and, and I think she is, she's a charming lady on the tour, you know, if you've taken the tour, you've, you know, you've seen her personality and the other people that work there. The Moorpark students are very entertaining when you take the tour, and the animals are all very docile, almost, you know, that's very, it's strange to see animals. As comments about the wildlife in the area, we have, do have all the things that she mentioned, and they are still there, and there is a cougar that runs out in those foothills and occasionally gets in our orchard, and I sort of wish he was in that little cage with the, with the dog and Patty. But we do have large, other large cats, bobcats in the area, and they haven't been intimidated at all. And as far as the lighting, I think I can address that a little bit.
Sure.
It's very, as far as light pollution, it's very quiet, it's probably less than a ranch going in the area, so, so I am pleased to have them there.
Okay. Reason I ask that, I'm constantly reminded by Patty Waters about light pollution, so, but I wanted to make sure I asked that question, so I didn't hear about it.
All right.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. Any question of Mr. Holmes? Thank you for coming down and telling us.
Thank you.
David Schwaber? He'll be the last speaker, and then we'll take a break. Name and address, David.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission, staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Patty and her operation. I do want to compliment the board and staff for their due diligence. I do think, you know, public safety, the, the question coming up, it's something that should be to the forefront, and all of us as neighbors understand that, and so appreciate your work on doing that. That being said, additionally, as a neighbor, I consider Patty to be a very good neighbor. In your packet, you received a list of, I believe, 11 adjacent property owners, one of which is myself. I think Patty has gone out of her way to be, to introduce herself to those of us in the neighborhood, to put the best step forward, to work with the community, and I think working with the community of Moorpark is really important. I, I don't want to elaborate on the point too much, but as you all know, the EDAM program at Moorpark College has been there for many years. I think it's something that the community takes a great deal of pride in having. Having her facility within a 10-minute range, I think, is fantastic. The other thing, too, that I really do appreciate is the work that she does with the young people at Moorpark College. I was very impressed when I went to the facility, toured the facility. The volunteers that she had were very forthright, very helpful, very conscientious, really wanted to engage, were very happy to see us there, really putting their foot forward and doing their part in educating the public on what is going on. I was very impressed with that. I've been very impressed, as has already been said, with the cleanliness, with the fencing. You know, Doug commented about the lighting issue, I, as an adjacent owner, didn't even know that the lights were on virtually. I get much more light pollution off of the country club and the million-dollar houses on the hill than I do from her operation, so I think that speaks really highly of her. Doug did make another good point, he commented on the issue of ACP. As all of you know, ACP is a tremendous issue in Ventura County, and those of us in the citrus industry are tremendously concerned about it. I spoke with Patty last year about the declining lemon trees on the property and asked her to please work on removing those, which she's been doing. This has even brought more to the forefront with, just last week, another find of ACP in an adjacent piece of property, next to mine, also next to Doug's, also next to Mr. Ballantyne's. All of us are going to be affected by that find, find, all of us are going to be having to spray because of that. So, when we see dilapidated groves, it's extremely important that that be taken into account, and she's been working on that. So, as an adjacent citrus grower, I'm appreciative of that. I think it, it is, you know, typically, I am not one to be forthright in, in seeing other changes in land use adjacent to me. As an agricultural operation, it makes my life that much more challenging. I say that from the standpoint of when I do pesticide applications, when I do aerial applications with helicopters of fertilizer, I have many adjacent landowners that have horses, I have many adjacent landowners that have very expensive homes and are very entitled. The amount of work that I put into interfacing with those people so that they understand what is going on around them is one of my biggest jobs. In the world that we live in today, in Ventura County, where agriculture is budding up against our cities, that's one of the biggest facing, or biggest challenges we're facing in ag. So, as her being a good neighbor, as her being willing to address issues and challenges that affect me, I want to applaud her for that, and thank her for her work in the community. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Schwaber? Uh-oh, look out, the other farmer.
David, this, this property's zone AE40, agricultural.
Right.
Exclusive. But the immediate area around it, there are 40 or 48 lots or so, half, five acres or less or so. If this were truly an ag-exclusive area, I consider ags, I'd have a serious, serious problem with the location of this, this facility. The erosion of the ag-exclusive, the subdivision of properties, you have some feeling about this?
Yeah, no, I think it's...
I mean, I'm more inclined to go along with it because of the actual makeup of the area, but if this were 40-acre zoning or large.
Yeah.
I would say no.
Yeah, no, and I totally agree with you, I understand where you're coming from, you know, those of us, and I think we, we have to look at the actual area of, if we look back 100 years ago, the area was laid out as a town, most people don't even know that. The Fairview wasn't even called the Fairview at that time, at that time it was called Epworth. It was the first town laid out before Moorpark even existed. So, you have parcel sizes that are relatively small, not as small as, say, Bardstown, which, I mean, Steve, you're very familiar with that, but I mean, it is a, a similar dynamic when you, as our towns grow, as the county grows, as land uses change, those of us who've been in an area for many years, I mean, I look at, my great-grandpa bought the property in 1940, so it's not as if we're newcomers to the community. But that being said, as I look at all of the changes, all of the additional ranchettes, for lack of a better word, that have come into the community, and, and they're on parcels that are old, I mean, these go back 100 years. So, I, I mean, it's, it's a fact of dealing with the change of our community and dealing with the land use change that's around us, and, and because of the ability of Patty to work with the adjacent landowners and be conscientious and be willing to accept, you know, the challenges that she's facing and work through those, I, I mean, that's why I am here as a neighbor who is in support.
I just want to know your feelings.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Schwaber?
Could I just? Not to you, sir, but I wanted to direct this to staff, is there a zone change before us? Thank you.
David, thank you for your time, sir, I appreciate it. Say hello to your mother. I appreciate it. Say hello to your mother.
Yeah, thank you, mate.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is 10:29. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Returning to the Planning Commission, when we left, last left you, we are still in the open portion of this. We have now a new speaker card, Mr. Bryce Banatine, if you'd like to come up, Bryce. Name and address, Bryce.
My name is Bryce Banatine. I'm at 12072 Broadway. I own the adjacent 80 acres next to Patty and I think that they're a very fine operation. I heavily recommend them. I was, I didn't know they were there for a year and a half. They're dead quiet. I see no light problems and I'm at my ranch, especially during the freezes, I'm there at 2 o'clock in the morning and 3 o'clock in the morning and I've never, ever noticed them. So I feel that any support as a neighbor that I can give them, they have an open door policy with me, use my ranch hands, my equipment, anytime they need it, any kind of help they need, I'm there to help them. They're very passive. I've been on the site myself. I use a maintenance guy that's a fabricator that does work for them and he's always spoken very highly of them, so I sincerely support them in any way I can and I think that they're an asset to our community. Any questions?
Any questions with Bryce? Farmer on stop.
You experience any land use conflicts between your farming operation and their operation?
None.
Okay.
No, she's, you know, they're, they're superb people. You know, there's other people in the neighborhood, you know, I mean, I've got multimillion dollar houses, you know, looking down on my property and they have a gate, you know, I have to give them 24-hour notice when I do a spray and they have a gated community and there's no way for me to get into that gate legally. So you know, there's other problems that are far greater for me, you know, than that operation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
One more, Bryce.
Sure.
Since you're living right next door, do you have any apprehension about your personal safety with these?
No, never. I've never, I've got ranch hand that lives there also and he's got four kids, you know, and I, I've never, ever had the, I've got four dogs and never, ever had any kind of apprehension or any fear or anything negative from that operation.
What about the college students? They're a fearful bunch, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah. The gravel trucks are pretty bad, but-
That's another conversation. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate your comment.
Sure, oh, thank you.
Alright, any other public speakers that would like to speak? Alright, then at this time, the applicant has the last word. And then I will close the public hearing and we'll deal with staff.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. John Heck, SBC Consulting, 374 Poli Ventura. It's great to come up on rebuttal after all the speakers have been in favor because it makes it very, very short. Three simple things. First, Commissioner Duquesne, your question regarding arming the trainers, the facility has tranquilizing equipment and firearms on site. They have a very strict protocol and as part of their training every year by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, they get refreshed on it so that the person in the, in the, any person who's in contact with the wild animals, with the dangerous animals, has a backup person in a separate gate that has access to the restraints as necessary. So there's a protocol for how that's done and there are firearms on site. The lemon trees that Mr. Schwaber mentioned, most of them are gone. I believe there are four left. The site, the aerial was a little bit outdated and those are going to be replaced in the very near future. And the last thing is, the vet's comments on the tigers, one thing we did not mention is that those tigers have lived there since they were cubs. They've never known another home. And so from what I understand, I'm not a vet, but those animals are territorial and that is their home and they really don't want to go anywhere else. So with your, with your help, they can stay there and we thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Okay, we do have a question.
Sure.
Of the total 11.7 acres, 11.78 or whatever it is, how much is used in the enclosures?
The CUP area is 8.5, I think. The actual enclosures?
Are the enclosure part?
I'm going to guess less than an acre, between 1 and 2.
Well, if you include the residence, outbuildings or whatever and the, how much is used of the 11.78?
Well, eight, the CUP area is going to encompass about 8 and 1/2.
I understand that, but I don't care about that. I'm asking you how much is physically used for the enclosures and the residences and the outbuildings of the 11 acres?
Three acres, three.
Probably three acres.
Thank you.
That's the best I've, thank you.
Thank you.
21,300 square feet. Does that help you? Let me tell you what my grandmother used to say to me about that. Alright, anything else from the applicant? Okay. Hearing no other public speakers, then the Chair will close the public hearing. Staff.
So I think staff is, I don't, we don't have anything new to add. There, there wasn't any testimony given for us to rebut. You know, the only thing that, that I can offer, if you do want to have a conversation about the five-year versus 10-year, I'm happy to weigh in on that and then a little bit maybe of background on the lack of permitting. So when we, when we discovered that the facility was there, facilities that don't have a, a land use entitlement are handled through the Code Compliance Office, Mr. Del Purding and Liz. And so they, they go directly there and then we coordinate with them and so they issue them a notice of violation and then they say the abatement of that violation is to obtain the appropriate permit. And so I was curious to see how, how you could have such large tigers, right, and not understand that, that you didn't need a land use entitlement. So I did have conversations with our own animal regulations and we did change the, the form that saying, when you go out, you need to let us know that you're out and there's a facility like that. And so now on the county's animal regulations form, there's a line that says, do you have a land use entitlement and if so, you know, what is the number? And if you don't, then, then Animal Services sends them to us. I also had the same conversation with the State Department of Fish and Wildlife with their attorney that saying, perhaps you should consider changing your application form because you, you can throughout the, throughout the state of California be giving people some false assurances and having them invest perhaps tens of thousands of dollars into cages where the entitlement, the underlying entitlement may not even be possible. So I've had this conversation with the California County Planning Directors Association and they also have the same concern that you have state and federal agencies issuing permits when the local and underlying and probably the most important, whether you can have the facility or not, right, hasn't even been obtained. So if we can't have that done, you know, we would be considering asking as a county maybe for a legislative fix to saying, you need to change your requirements to include the lead agency or the local agency upfront. So I understand how that happens, you know, that you get some false senses of security that you've obtained every permit you have. And so that, that's the issue on the lack of permitting. When we found out she was there, she did enter into a compliance agreement with the county right away, so we understood and there were some conditions about how she could operate and how she couldn't operate while we were processing the permit and she adhered to all of those and, and one of the main one was for that, was she wasn't allowed to have anybody out on the site. And so she has adhered to that the whole time that we've been processing this. So that's the way we, we kind of bridged that no permitting versus getting here now because our first reaction is always, well, you need to stop whatever you're doing and wait until you get the permit, right? So she already had the, the, the animals at the site and so she did get a letter from a, from a veterinarian, said it would be distressful for the animals to move them, so we allowed them to stay. That's a rare circumstance, but we allowed them based on that evidence to stay through the compliance agreement until we got here today. So that's that story. The issue on the, on the five versus 10-years, I think that, that conversation is completely up to your commission about what you want to do with that. You know, we've, we've had these before where, you know, if, if they're a little bit uncertain or controversial, we've put shorter dates on them because we don't know. The interesting part about this one is she's already been out there operating and, and clearly her neighbors, you know, didn't have any issues. So from a, from my perspective, I'm not opposed to the 10-years, right? And so I wouldn't be opposed to that. They originally came in asking for a 20-year permit. I think that's a long time for something we're really not quite sure about yet. But the 10-year only because it's already inspected through the restricted species permit by the USDA, by the animal regulations, by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and by the county of the permitting authority, not less than once every three years. So you know, at a minimum, they're being inspected all of the time and they're required in their permit conditions to send us those inspection reports. So if we thought that, that something was going on, clearly we would be allowed to, to go out there regardless. So you know, the, the 10-year permit is not really an issue for me. If you want to do, have a five-year look at the permit before we issued the other five years, that's an option too. And besides those two things, I didn't really see anything that we had any rebuttal for, so if you have any questions for us.
It's unclear to me, Kim, how many animals are actually permitted? And of course, I'm really only concerned with the large predators.
So fif, the, the permit is 53 and I think there is a buffer in there of 63 for animals that may come in and be rehabilitated and leaving the site. So there isn't a specific condition in there that says you can only have four tigers or, or you know, eight felines. Your commission can absolutely discuss that. There isn't a, a specific condition outlining that. There's a specific condition for caging and the animals that can fit in the caging that are covered under the safety plan would be what was allowed out there or what would be allowed.
It would appear to me that the physical facilities might restrict the number of large predators and it seems to me that that shouldn't be open-ended unless somehow you get another look at it, you, Planning Director or somebody. Or they should have, it would appear to me, they should have a number. They want to go above that number. It could be with Planning Director approval as far as I'm concerned, but I want to make sure that health and safety issues are taken care of. And I don't want to, and if that doesn't coincide with a five-year or 10-year, you've got, you or someone has to take a look at that.
Right. So you, you could amend the condition, condition number one, to specifically say how many, how many like large cats or whatever it is that you're concerned about should be or could be out there without a further modification of the permit. So we could, if that was the pleasure of your commission-
It just seems like a reasonable thing to do. At the very least, if they were to go above whatever number everybody approves of, that it had to be with your approval, which means you would take a look at the health and safety issues.
I think the issue is we heard that there was eight out there now, is that, is that right? And that they were building cages for two more, is that correct? So if there was a number of 10 put to it, I'm not sure that that would be a problem, but-
The other question I had is, given the frequency of these types of proceedings, does the Board of Supervisors have any inclination in dealing with inherently dangerous animals?
I don't believe so. So the last time that we took the, the, the last time we had a wild animal, that's how they referred to in the coastal zone and offered to have the ordinance admitted. At that time, we weren't taken up on that, so I don't believe it's something that the Board is wanting to entertain and they haven't asked us to amend the ordinance. It's a permit that's allowed in the zone and so they're allowed to apply for this discretionary decision before your planning commission.
Okay. Commissioner Duquesne?
I recall some years ago, within the last five anyway, that we've had other applicants that have some kind of zoning violation and they come before the planning commission and they do get their CUP as long as they've abated these things. The only thing that needed abatement here was the lack of a CUP.
There was other things out there. At the time, I think that there was a trailer that was out there, maybe there were some structures. I think Ms. Perry bought the property and it had violations on it at the time. And so she abated all of the violations that come with the property because that's the way that it happens. When you buy a piece of property that has violations, they become yours. So it wasn't just the fact that it needed it, but she had cleaned up everything else that needed to be done too, including I believe the removal of the illegal trailer that was out there.
Generally, it's not the planning commission's direction to, to penalize someone for not, for somehow getting awry of, of getting a CUP or having these violations if they've bought a property though, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so there, so because she didn't have a CUP, she, there's no punitive measure in saying, well, you didn't get a CUP, therefore you can't have this use. There's, there's no, we don't do that here.
No, the remedy is to apply for the CUP.
And, and, and get everything straight.
And get everything straight.
The only thing, the only thing that I found were the, the gate that's been answered and this temporary extension cord. I don't want to put a, some condition on it if it was something that it was extraordinary and I just happened to, to notice.
I did, I did talk to Mr. Heck at the break and asked that they do, you know, address that extension cord issue. It should be hardwired in there as our code compliance has said, just for safety and, and he's agreed to make sure that that occurs.
Okay. And I just wanted to go over some, some other things from the, from the planning department's perspective with how this is different than our other tiger issue. And some of the things that came to my mind was that it's not in a high fire danger area. The roads are adequate. It doesn't appear to have any viewshed impacts to public trails. There's close ties with public safety, 10 minutes away from trained people who can assist. There's no travel in and out for entertainment or commercial or any other purpose other than taking them in for rehabilitation and taking them out where is appropriate. And then the visitors coming in are adequately supervised, you know, with children, a three to one in the buffer zones. We, the reason why we were almost sprayed is because we got too close to the fence and we were told, no, get on the other side of this wood fence and a hedge and my mistake, I, I went closer. But it seems like the signs on the, I forget what they're called, the, the little redundant gates? There was like a law enforcement turn, term for it. Anyway, those seem to be in place. Are there anything else from the planning viewpoints, you know, planning department's point of view of how is, this is distinct from our, our last tiger escapade?
I think that you covered all of the points that we were considering in the staff report and during today's presentation. They are completely different cases and I think that you've covered that quite well.
And, and there's cell phone service and all of that, that wasn't, wasn't there? The, it's a, it's a noisier area. There's, there's so many differences just by, by virtue of its location.
Yeah, by virtue of its location and by virtue of it being, you know, in the coastal zone versus the non-coastal zone, there was other, you know, the, the road, the fact that this was a conservation and the other one was working animals, there was, and especially I think the first point that you made, the high fire hazard was a, was a very critical issue and the fact that the camps that were a part of the other one, there was remote location of the camps where maybe 5,000 children could be present at one time, wasn't the same in this, in this location.
Thank you for that.
I have a question regarding the findings we're supposed to make regarding compatibility with the general plan and zoning. It's zoned ag-exclusive 40 acres and the project is not agriculture. That's expressed in the terms of the staff report. It's located within 40 feet of agriculture. The land's classified as farmland. The proposed project, as it is quoted, is located on land and will result in a direct loss of soils designated as prime statewide importance and unique. Now, in order to be compatible and for me to approve of that, the staff says that because, because you're going to screen it and because they're going to have to notify farmers of their operations, and I forget, there was something else they were going to do, would somehow make that compatible with ag-exclusive. And I found that rationale totally irrational. I am not going to vote against the project. I'm going to vote for- I'm going to vote for the project. But the reason I'm voting for the project is the subdivision of the general area into small parcels. If it were truly ag-exclusive, I would vote hell no. And I would hope that staff would take into consideration, when these types of matters are presented, that they protect ag-exclusive. It's to preserve and protect commercial agricultural lands, to protect these areas from encroachment from non-related uses. And this is clearly a non-related use. So if I sound like I'm chastising staff, I guess I am. But, but for the subdivision of the area, I would vote hell no. And I hope you would keep that in mind the next time someone comes in for a CUP. That's it.
That was almost a question, Counselor.
Almost.
Almost. All right, any other questions, staff? All right, then the, the Chair will entertain discussion and/or motion. If there's no discussion, let me just weigh in. I'm in support of the 10-year. The last time we did this, particularly the Lockwood Valley, we gave them the 10-year, but we had a one-year report back. And that's because there was a lot of things they had to do, a lot of movement, where I don't see that in this particular case here. As far as the, the animals, Ms. Perry quite accurately represented how many licenses she, permits she has to get. Before we even got to the adding additional animals, there would be, I can't imagine how many agencies, along with the vets. You just don't have the bandwidth to handle that many animals before it even got to the director. So I'm comfortable that that's not going to occur, but...
But we do have an upper number.
Yeah, I know. But at the same time, to force that number, I realize there are multiple other agencies, to bring in another large cat, there's, you've got to have this much space, you've got to have that, there's all the federal and state requirements that she's going to have to comply with. So I feel that that, those agencies would be faster reacting than we would be. I'm, I'm quite comfortable with the representations by the doctor here today that, first of all, the operator is very cognizant, and number two, he's the type of individual that would not like to see the animals stressed if there were too many in one place. Those are just my feelings. Other than that, the 10-year, I'm very comfortable with this application, and I understand the differences between this and the others that we have heard. Those are just my comments. Any other comments, unless we have a motion? Okay. Somebody like to entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that we moved recommended staff action with the amendment stated by the Chair.
Of the 10 years, okay. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion that's presented? Hearing, yes, good.
I obviously had a lot of half-concerns about the issue, general issue of safety, particularly if it relates to the felines that'll be housed at the facility. I certainly expressed those, those issues the previous time, having had some limited amount of personal experience. I'm real comfortable with the way this operation is going together. I think somebody read what was in the wind a year or so ago, whenever this first came to pass, and ultimately what the decisions were, and, and did their homework on getting this thing moving correctly the first time and not piecemealing it and keeping your fingers crossed. I'm very satisfied, particularly satisfied with the interface it appears is in place between the operation before us and public safety, both Sheriff and Fire. And I, I thank staff for specifically making the comment that this is very different from the previous application, because I was pretty firm on the way I felt previously. I don't know that I would ever be comfortable around cats that big.
Physically.
But, but...
I promise you'll all change your heart.
But that's said, I'm prepared to, to vote in favor.
Okay. Any other discussions on the motion and its amendment? Hearing none? Please vote. Congratulations, your CUP is approved. There's a 10-day appeal period. If nobody's appealed within the 10, is that 10 calendar or 10? I've never, I never did ask that question.
It's 10 calendar days.
10 calendars?
Yeah, except for a holiday.
Yeah, except for the holiday. All right, 10 calendar days, otherwise your CUP is deemed approved. Congratulations. And I'm sure if there was no self-taught, the teenagers would have told us. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your enthusiasm. We do have some other business to conduct, so thank you, Bill. And for the college students, welcome to the process.
Could I just make one, one last, one last statement? I would like to invite all of you to please come out. And you guys didn't really get to experience it because there were limitations. So you're all invited to come out and enjoy it. Please do.
Thank you. Enjoy. All right. Mr. Prillhart, you're up. Finding, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to disparage you. I didn't mean to disparage you. Director Prillhart.
Thank you very much, Chair. What I have is just a brief discussion about our next item. February 19th is the next time that we'll be meeting, so it's next week. I think I told you last week it was going to be the appeal of two zoning clearances that were issued on oil and gas permits for condition use permits that were issued long ago. So we'll be having that conversation that, do you already have that on your iPads?
Oh, yeah.
Right, okay, so you already have that. Very good. That is the only one that I see coming, oh, no, we have another one already. So I have April 2nd, 2015. This is probably new, came to your tentative probably just yesterday. So this is the non-coastal zoning ordinance and the coastal zoning ordinance amendment to the noticing requirement. So that's one of the things that the Board directed us to not too long ago, was to have more noticing outside of the 300-foot noticing, especially if you were on larger parcel. So that's one thing that we decided to get right to work on, because it's something that we like to do, too. Clearly, CEQA is just one big giant public noticing act, and so the more people that we notice, the better we are. And so I'm excited to have that one, and it looks like staff is ready to present that on April 2nd. So I have those two things, and then sadly, it's Lori's last day, which is, luckily, she's only going upstairs, and so we'll still see her on all of our appeal items, which hopefully we won't see you often. But it is her last day, and I just wanted to say publicly that she's just been a joy and a pleasure to work with, just Johnny on the spot. She gets everything done, and, and it always looks like it runs very smoothly down here, but there's a lot of work that's happening in that desk and that keyboard and, and, you know, what she accomplishes when we leave this room and gets all of our minutes and resolutions ready. There's a lot of background work that happens, and it happens seamlessly because Lori is doing the work. So I did want to, to thank her for that.
Congratulations. See, we got you married, we got you promoted, what, got you a new house?
Watch out for the next one.
Yeah.
And then I also wanted just to really quickly apologize today for my tardiness. I know in the 20 years I've been here, I've never been late to the planning commission, but I did forget the Valentines for my four-year-old on the kitchen table this morning, and when I got to school, he had big tears in his eyes. And so I quickly ran home to recover them and run by and drop them off at the school and so apologized for being late, but it meant a lot to him. So I thought I would be able to get here right before the hearing started, so I wasn't too late into it. So sorry about that.
Well, just so you know, I looked it up in the county personnel policy that that is an exemption for tardiness, so it's, it's granted. All right, anything from the planning commissioners you'd like to introduce? My only question of, what is our agendas that you can foresee between now and, say, 1st of July? Just, we may have vacations, things like that be coming up.
That's the, the April is the furthest out that I can see. I will, I will go back and ask the planners to know if they have anything that they believe is coming up to try to get it on the tentative. And how far out do you check the availability? Is it a couple months out?
Two months, yeah.
Two months out.
Two months out.
So there's no giant, we're going to redo the general plan in June or anything like that you're aware of?
Well, that, we haven't, the RFP hasn't closed on that, and so we haven't really sat down to talk to the consultants about the exact timeline. But the time that we will be here, I imagine we'll be here before you, before June, to have a conversation, and those interviews will happen at that time, too. But we'll give you plenty of notice. We'll want all five of you here, so we'll work around your vacation schedules.
Okay. No, I just wanted to get a feel of what our workload is looking like in the next 90, 120 days. All right. Anything else for the good of the order from the commissioners? In honor of Ms. Gaines, I'd like to say thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with you. I wish you the best of luck in the future. And can we keep the next one a little bit longer?
I'm going to try.
Okay. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I adjourn this in honor of Lori Gaines.